Good evening and welcome again to Public Perspective. I'm your host, Kevin McDermit. And tonight, we're honored to have as our guest, one elected official, a very important one, Cook County Commissioner, Richard Boykin, in the 1st District.
Well, thank you very much, Kevin, for having me. I'm honored to be on the show.
So, we're going to return to a topic that we've discussed on the show and in other contexts about violence, and particularly gun violence. I know that this is something that you've worked on, something that is a priority for you. The issue of gun violence in Chicago in particular, if you watch the evening news, you know that it's a problem. Children being killed, innocent bystanders being killed. What can the county do, and what in particular are you moving towards, in order to try to address this issue?
Well, let me say this, Kevin. There is no more pressing issue confronting elected officials today, and especially those in the city of Chicago, than the issue of gun violence. We are obligated, as elected officials, to protect the citizens that we represent. If we can't provide protection and safety for those citizens, then we've essentially failed them. And so, what I've done is, after the Memorial Day weekend, where we had 49 people shot, 12 people killed in the city of Chicago, I introduced a seven-point plan to curb gun violence. It is a seven-point plan that is a holistic plan in its approach, and if fully implemented, I believe will help to curb the gun violence that we've seen in the city of Chicago.
So, how will it do that, in a nutshell? What will it do?
Well, let me say this. To date, we've had over 1,300 people shot in the city of Chicago.
Does that include the suburbs, or just talking about the city?
This is the city of Chicago. Shootings are up 25% in the city of Chicago over last year this time. We've had over 230 people killed. Every day that we don't implement the seven-point plan is a day where we have more and more people shot and more and more people killed. With the advances in medical technology, in fact, because we've gotten far advanced at medical technology, we've been able to save lives. But at what cost to the taxpayers? Look, we've been able to save individuals if we get them to Stroger Hospital, Cook County Hospital. We've been able to stabilize them. But that's a cost of $55,000 for every gunshot victim that goes through those doors at Stroger Hospital.
Plus, those victims don't, they may live, but that doesn't mean they recover completely. They can be injured for life from these gunshots.
No question about it. In fact, the University of Chicago Crime Lab put the cost of gun violence to the city of Chicago last year at $2.5 billion. $2.5 billion.
Just for the city's gun violence?
Just for the city's gun violence. That's the emergency-related services, the police services, the courts, the trauma. But it doesn't take into consideration the long-term impact and effects of these gunshot wounds. For example, an individual who's 16 and gets shot, his spinal cord gets severed, he's paralyzed for the rest of his life, has to be in a wheelchair. Who's going to pay that cost? Obviously, his insurance is not going to pay it. The taxpayers of the city of Chicago are going to wind up paying that, because it's going to have to be picked up by somebody. If he lives to get 60 or 65, that's in the cost of millions of dollars.
Plus, that 16-year-old will have a much more difficult time finding work, may not be able to complete school. There's all sorts of other costs where that 16-year-old might have become a very productive citizen, could have become a lawyer or doctor, whatever, and earned a good living, supported a family. Now, it's going to be very much more difficult to try to do that.
No question about it. And that's why it's so urgent for us to pass the seven-point plan. The seven-point plan is holistic. Look, it calls on individuals to have personal responsibility and accountability. The first point of the plan calls for parenting workshops to be conducted by not-for-profit organizations and faith-based organizations who have experience in making sure that we reach those parents and help to teach them the kind of things that they need to know in order to help raise their children. Look, we have a lot of single mothers and single fathers and grandparents who are struggling to raise children. These individuals ought to be able to get the wraparound services from the government to help them raise their kids. These are all of our children. You know, the reality of it is, is that we say it takes a village to raise a child. Then we ought to be that village. We ought to truly believe that, and we ought to be that. The second point calls for strict enforcement of curfew laws. I believe if you had one and two, Amari Brown, the seven-year-old who was killed on July 4th watching fireworks, if his father had taken parenting workshops, if he had abided by the curfew laws, the kid wouldn't have been outside. He was outside at midnight, and he got shot, of course, when someone came and shot him.
Now, they were aiming for his father, right?
Well, according to Superintendent McCarthy, they were aiming for his father. But still, I mean, you know, you can't just shoot willy-nilly into a crowd of people. I mean, that is unconscionable, and it's an act that should never take place in America. And so, you know, strict enforcement of curfew. Look, when I was growing up in Inglewood, I was raised by a single dad. I mean, he raised four of us. But he always said, "Don't let the streetlights come on before you get home." In other words, we knew that we had to beat those streetlights, you know, before they got, came on. We had to be at home. And if we weren't, we got discipline, we got the belt. He didn't spare the rod. And he was a strict disciplinarian. Let me tell you, I had more fear of him than I did of God. I thought he was God in many instances. And then, of course, we had those commercials that came on television that says, "Hey, it's 10 o'clock. Do you know where your children are?"
I remember those when I was growing up. Yes, that, "Hey, it's 10 o'clock," or "It's 10:30." Because like you, I had a curfew when I was a kid. And even as a teenager, the city used to have curfews, so 10:30 and 11:30. And if you were out, you could be arrested. The police could take you and take you home and say, "You violated curfew."
The third point on the plan, and it's an important point, we would put more money into mental health programs. A lot of these individuals who are doing the shooting, we think may be suffering from some mental illness or trauma-related issues. Maybe they were born drug-addicted, and they didn't get the help that they needed then. So, we have to figure out a way, as a society, to give them the help that they need. We're also working with the Chief Judge and State's Attorney Anita Alvarez to expand therapeutic court models, a mental health court, substance abuse court, prostitution court, you name it. We don't want to clog up the criminal justice system with individuals who have things that they need to get healed of. We don't want to send them to jail. We want to send them to programs to get their treatment. Somebody's suffering from mental illness, let's get them the help that they need, and let's not send them to the Cook County Jail. The Cook County Jail has become the largest mental health institution in the United States of America. That is a shame. That is shameful. We ought to be ashamed of it. And Sheriff Tom Dart has been working to reduce that number. Right now, he put Dr. Nika Jones, a psychologist, actually the first time, is running the Cook County Jail now, a psychologist. He's put things in place to try to steer people who, you know, have mental illness away from the jail and into diversionary programs. And that's important. But point number four is perhaps the most controversial point of the plan. Point number four says that we ought to charge individuals and co-conspirators, individuals who are pulling triggers and their co-conspirators, with domestic terrorism. Now, we also have heard from a number of people, and so we want to put safeguards in place to make sure that prosecutors don't abuse this. Prosecutors already have the ability to use the federal domestic terrorism statute to charge individuals. Now, they've basically used it-
So, what would be different under this plan? If they can already do that today, what changes?
Well, here's the difference. So, they've basically used the statute to go after individuals who have attempted to join ISIS, or who've attempted to join Al Qaeda, or people who've been enemy combatants against America, if you will. In fact, an individual was just charged with murder and domestic terrorism in New Jersey about two weeks ago. But his crimes, he killed three people, and in all of his writings and everything that he did, he was denouncing America. So, he went after America, if you will. But there is no difference in my mind, Kevin, between an individual who joins, an American citizen who joins up with a gang, whose stated goal is to kill and control their certain area by any means necessary so that they can sell their drugs. So, there's no difference between that person, an individual who joins ISIS or Al Qaeda, whose stated goal is to kill Americans and to destabilize America. These individuals are destabilizing our communities. 95% of the people in the community are being terrorized.
So, I certainly don't dispute that. And I, from all I read, and I know you've met one of our other guests who has written about gun violence here, who also feels that it is, he himself uses the word terrorism about gun violence in America. So, it is a terror-inducing thing.
Yes.
But to characterize it as domestic terrorism, there is a corresponding problem, and I'm sure you know, about the over-militarization of police forces in some communities, and the disconnection of police from the communities they serve, and an oppositional relationship between police. And one of the dangers I would see here in declaring this as domestic terrorism is that it even ratchets up that militaristic response, because domestic terrorism is generally, it's a matter for homeland security, the National Guard can be called in. Terrorism is seen as an existential threat to the United States, which could incur a military response overseas. So, by declaring it as domestic terrorism, do we run the risk of ratcheting up the violence that responds to it?
I don't think so. Look, I'm a student of history, and the Roman Empire was a great empire at one time. It was roaring, it was bustling, it was the biggest power around. The Roman Empire wasn't destroyed from outside. The Roman Empire was destroyed from within. And America won't be destroyed from an existential threat like ISIS or Al Qaeda. America, if it's to be destroyed, will be destroyed from within. And this gun violence has the potential of taking the city of Chicago under. When you look at the costs associated with this gun violence, and when you look at the long-term impact and effects of this gun violence on communities, it brings the community down. For example, Kevin, we all want to see a west side that's thriving, we all want to see western suburbs that are thriving. But you know what? Public safety paves the way for economic development. Public safety.
It's the foundation.
If you don't have safe streets, you can't get good restaurants to come in, you can't get good businesses to come in. And so, you'll have a community that's dying on the vine. You basically have a community that's being terrorized by who no matter what. Now, and so what I'm saying to you is that our threat is from within. I mean, I wish we would focus on this whole issue of domestic terrorism at home. Look, how many people have to die? We had 55 people shot over the 4th of July weekend, 10 people killed. People over the weekend.
That was our own, our own figures.
Now, if we'd have one person, if we'd have one person who would have tried to do an act of beheading, an ISIS-type act, there would have been a big spotlight on that. Where's the big spotlight on all of these lives that are being lost? Where's the big spotlight on all of these lives, individuals who are being shot?
Well, and of course, I hope you understand, I don't dispute any of that. I mean, I am complete agreement that the effects of the epidemic of violence is horribly destructive. My fear is that by equating it with terrorism that, well, I'll come back to something, you and I talked about a little bit before the show. So, And up and make it more of a violent response or a militaristic response, because now it's viewed as terrorism, not just street violence.
Kevin, we're in a state of emergency in many of our communities on the west side of Chicago. Austin, leading all 77 neighborhoods in terms of homicides. Easton West Garfield, North Lawndale, top five in terms of violent neighborhoods. Individuals who live in those neighborhoods deserve to have safe streets. They deserve to be able to walk down the streets. We have to meet this force with equal or greater force that's on the streets. What do you call an individual who comes out of an alley and shoots into a crowd of individuals, and then goes about his merry way? What do you call an individual who's driving down the street and shooting out the window, and he shoots a grandmother who's on her porch? Or he shoots an infant who's in the house? I mean, you call that terrorism. That is a terrorist act. This is not an individual who is, you know, being kind and nice. And let me say this. If you charge someone with domestic terrorism, you get a number of things. One, you get additional police resources from the federal government. Two, you get additional prosecutorial investigative resources. Three, you shine a big spotlight on this whole issue of gang violence, on this whole issue of gun violence. And fourth, you put this person away for a long time so that they're not able to hurt anybody else. Right now, criminals, the criminal element, does not fear the law. They don't respect God, they don't respect the law, they don't respect you, and they don't even respect themselves.
So, you mentioned earlier some safeguards that you were putting in place in response to people like me who raise objections.
Absolutely, absolutely. So, we would put an independent, an independent board together, made up of retired judges, made up of community citizens like yourself. And every charge of domestic terrorism would be reviewed by this independent board. And so, if the individual-
Who appoints the board? Who would appoint that?
Well, I mean, we probably look at the Attorney General appointing the board. Somebody who's fair-minded, somebody who's accountable, the Attorney General. But it would be sort of an opportunity to have an extra layer of protection, so that if somebody is charged with domestic terrorism, and they shouldn't be charged with it, then we pull them out, and we'll charge them with something less, right? That's available to the prosecutors. So, I mean, we put that safeguard in there. Point number five, basically an expansion of the utilization of the sheriff's police. Cook County Sheriff's Police, city of Chicago residents already pay for the Cook County Sheriff's Police.
It's part of our taxes, right?
It's part of the taxes. We ought to be utilizing them in communities that are high-crime areas, communities that have been devastated by unemployment and poverty. We ought to be using them there. Look, I believe that the police force, a surge of police force, is a deterrent. I mean, if you see a police car right there, chances are you're not going to commit that crime. If you see police walking down the street, walking in the neighborhoods, chances are you're going to have safer neighborhoods. And you got to get community policing. You got to get people from the community actually joining the police force.
So, how would the sheriff's police help out with that?
Well, look, I think that Sheriff Tom Dart has done a terrific job. We had the sheriff's police in the Austin community over an eight-day period. We were able to take off 60 guns that shouldn't have been on the streets.
Because those extra police were there?
Because those extra police were there. I mean, because I think right now, the Chicago Police Department is stretched thin. And so, you might as well utilize every resource available to you to help reduce this violence that we're seeing in our streets.
Now, theoretically, you could increase the number of officers in the Chicago Police Force and accomplish the same thing. What is the advantage of using county sheriffs versus simply staffing up the Chicago Police Department?
Saves taxpayers money.
How?
In terms of-
It's still officers.
The more police, though, that you hire, you're going to have to pay those police. Like right now, the city of Chicago is paying a ton of money in terms of overtime for Chicago Police Department. If they utilize the sheriff's police, that tax is already in place. You're not going to pay anymore.
So, are the sheriff's police then underutilized?
I think the sheriff's police can do more. Look, they generally traditionally police in the suburban communities, but they're a force that's able to police in the city of Chicago. I wouldn't say that they're underutilized. I'd say that they could be used a little bit more effectively in the city of Chicago. Point six calls for stiffer penalties for people caught carrying illegal guns, and it also expands a gun buyback program. So, we try to get the guns off the streets, right? They're given cards to individuals they could go buy things with. And we make it tough for individuals who are caught carrying these guns illegally.
Now, speaking of illegal guns, let me segue for a moment, because there was just an item on the news about several communities that are suing various municipalities because of the supposedly licensed and regulated gun shops, or was it something like, some enormous percentage, 80% or something, of guns involved in violent actions come from these three gun shops? Does your plan have any, because those gun shops are all, I think at least most of them are, within Cook County. Does your plan address that kind of issue?
No, this holistic plan doesn't look at that. Look, I mean, we, we're trying to get guns off the streets that shouldn't be there. We're saying to individuals that if you're caught carrying a gun illegally, then you're going to do some significant time, and you're going to pay an addition, you're going to pay a huge fine for that. So, we want people to think twice about carrying illegal guns and that sort of thing. Right now, there is no disincentive. I mean, individual criminals know that if they're caught carrying a gun illegally, that they're going to do maybe three months in prison, and they cycle back out on the streets and they pick up another gun.
So, what would you, what would you ramp that up to?
So, look, we, we support the State's Attorney's plan that's in Springfield, where she would actually enhance the penalty and make it a year, or two years in prison, automatic for being caught with an illegal gun on your person. In Cook County, we just introduced an ordinance, just at the last board meeting, where we stiffened the fine for people caught carrying assault weapons in Cook County, from $1,000 to $5,000. We actually introduced that ordinance, and I'm hoping that at the next board meeting, we will get it passed. We got to make it a real deterrent for individuals who are caught carrying these guns illegally.
So, you've got six points.
Seven. Point seven, and perhaps one of the most important points, says that we would have job training and a real jobs program for communities that have been hit hard by unemployment, poverty, and violence. So, in other words, we would take government resources, and we would make sure that individuals who are living in those communities had the resources that they need to have job training. We would do tax credits to companies to hire these individuals, get them off the streets, give them an opportunity to be in a job instead of slinging drugs on a street corner, right? Give them an opportunity at work instead of joining a gang. I mean, that's what we have to do. A lot of these kids have dropped out of school.
Seems to me that might be the most important. Give them an alternative to what they're doing today.
Well, that and point one, parenting. I mean, a child can't be what a child can't see. And a lot of the young parents raising kids today-
Don't know how to do it necessarily.
Don't know how to do it necessarily, and so, we have to give them the tools that they need in order to be able to raise these kids. But the jobs are so important, and a lot of this is poverty-driven. I mean, just the other day, Kevin, I was very disappointed with the Justice Advisory Committee in Cook County. They issued $800,000 in violence prevention grants, and not one cent to communities that actually lead the city in terms of violence. Austin, Easton West Garfield, North Lawndale, nothing.
And these are areas that applied for the grants and didn't get them, or they just didn't know about them?
Well, they had two applicants from the west side out of 24 applicants, and they said that their scores wasn't high enough. Under legislation that I'm going to be introducing, one, we're going to make sure that we have more applicants from these areas. But two, I think that the scores ought to be weighted to these communities that are experiencing violence, these communities that are high unemployment and high poverty. There's no question about it. I mean, look, the people in those communities are frustrated because government resources aren't flowing to their communities. And so, you wonder why people are upset, and why they riot, and that sort of thing, because they can see that the government resources aren't flowing to them. They're flowing all around them, to other communities.
So, that's a great segue, speaking of government resources, because I'm going to shift subjects right now and talk about tax increases. Because any plan, even a seven-point program, is going to cost something.
Right.
So, right now, we're looking at President Brackwinkle recommending, astonishing to all of those who've watched her career, that she's recommending a 1% increase in the sales tax.
Right.
What's going on? Where do you stand on that?
Well, look, I've already come out in opposition to increasing the sales tax. I listen to my constituents, and I've met with a number of, I met with over 4,000 people in the last week. And maybe 10 out of the 4,000 said that we ought to vote to increase the sales tax. The overwhelming majority of people feel like they're taxed out. They're taxed out, I mean, we've-
Well, we have amongst the highest sales taxes of any county in the country.
Well, we will be the highest in the nation-
If we go to 10%, right?
If we go to 10.25%. It'll be 11.25% around McCormick Place, because they get the charge a percentage point higher for all of those tourists coming in around McCormick Place. But if you go around McCormick Place and you buy a sandwich, you're going to pay that extra additional sales tax of 11.25%. Look, the sales tax is the most regressive tax of all taxes.
Without question.
And it hits poor people the hardest. It hits the working-class poor the hardest. Every time they go to the grocery store, if they buy a gallon of milk, if they buy a dozen of eggs, it's going to hit them hard. I mean, look, what I've said is this. First of all, I don't understand why she would want to do this at this time.
So, what's the alternative, though? I mean, what, how else do we get the money?
I'm going to get to the alternative. First of all, we're not even in the budget season yet. She hasn't even presented a budget for 2016 just yet. Now, it's expected, according to the Chief Financial Officer, that we'll have about $140 million shortfall or deficit. She's saying that she wants to take this money, 400, over 400 million that would come from a sales tax increase, put it towards the shortfall of 140 million, and put 200 million in terms of shoring up the pensions. But she also said in the same- But she also said in the same breath at the city club that if Springfield acts, that she would consider rolling back the sales tax increase. Now, she's in a pickle because yesterday, Governor Rauner actually introduced his pension proposal, 500 pages, but he also included in it Cook County's proposal that's down in Springfield, and he's urging passage of it. And so, the bill that she actually put in Springfield is actually moving in Springfield now. So, I don't understand the rush to get this done right away. I think you've got to debate this, you've got to make sure that, look, before you ask taxpayers for more money...
If this bill passes, if her bill passes in Springfield, what exactly will it do? Will it raise the tax?
No, it won't raise the tax. It'll allow her to cut benefits.
From the pensions?
Yes. It'll allow...
So, she's now saying that she wants the tax so she doesn't have to cut benefits? But meanwhile, this legislation in Springfield would say she's going to cut them anyway.
Well, it will allow her to do that. It will allow her to shore up the pensions and pay more into the pension system.
If the tax would allow it.
Right.
But without the tax, if the legislation passes, then she has to cut benefits. Is that correct?
No, no, no. So, here's what it is. So, right now, she had a Democratic governor, she had a Democratic legislature for four years in Pat Quinn. We didn't pass a bill. We didn't pass a bill. So, she's saying there's a crisis with the pensions. She's saying the pension debt service is costing us $1 million today, $30 million a month. And so, she's saying, "We've got to get these pensions under control," right? We've got to, Cook County is paying 57%. It's funded at 57% of the pensions. We're bettered in the city, we're bettered in the state.
Commissioner Boykin, I hate to cut you off in the middle of that argument, and I certainly want to hear the end of it, but we're out of time.
Oh, wow.
So, I'll have to ask you to come back later, and we'll continue this discussion. Thank you so much for being here. I really appreciated the discussion.
Thank you very much, Kevin.
And thank you for joining us once again on Public Perspective. I'm your host, Kevin McDermott. Come back, we'll have Commissioner Boykin back again in the future. You can catch us every Saturday night on Comcast Channel 19 at 8 o'clock, and you can find us on the web at publicperspective.tv. So, until next time, thank you and good night.